will please come to order. The time is a little before 1:10, and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Also, as a reminder to all meeting attendees seeking parking validation for today's meeting, please be sure to scan the QR code located on the back table near the chamber's entrance to claim your discount. If you do not already have a Metropolis account, you will need your license plate number to set up the account in advance of receiving your validation. Please be sure to complete this prior to the end of today's meeting, as the QR code will be removed at the conclusion of today's meeting. Calling the roll, Mr. Sweeney.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schlepper.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Turner.
Present.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly is absent. Council President Miller.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody signed it?
Lou?
Good afternoon, everybody. For this particular public comments, first, I want to thank Mr. Gallagher. You have addressed the issue which you actually presented in the past budget hearings, like two years ago, even four years ago. But the topic was important, but it was never got focused on. Right now, our budget is tight. We definitely need to decrease the waste, decrease certain, I would say, miss spending. So for example, if all the people working at the sheriff's office, they get a better contract, in that case, probably we would not really have to force lots of the departments in health and human services to pay from their budget to cover the overtime hours as well. And that could be actually one way to readjust our spreadsheet, to see if we have other trends similar to this, which we can actually get the money back to fund important health and human services. Right now, the hunger already started. It's not just City of Cleveland. It's not just Cuyahoga County. It's not only State of Ohio. Please do a better job to watch out our money, because even people working hard, not everybody can get a high-paid job to contribute to the public funds, which is the tax, which is what you need to distribute into the services people actually need. Make sure you prioritize health and human services first this time, please. Thank you.
Che Gaddison?
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Che Gaddison, and I am here before you as a resident of the city of East Cleveland, as well as a member of the Millionaires' Row Neighborhood Association. I am here to ask that during this budget negotiation, as well as testimony, that you please give consideration to my city. Please give attention to correcting the disparities in services that the city of East Cleveland has received in the past. Please give the tax dollars back to the city that the responsible residents and homeowners who do pay their taxes, who do pay their taxes and expect that these tax dollars will be reinvested back into their community, and that has not always been the case. Now, in the midst of transition, we see changes and improvements in the city, but they seem to be centered around the developments of Circle East and the Noble Row corridor. But other areas of our community are starving for repair and maintenance, and I ask here today that their tax dollars that have already been paid for be reinvested into the community to provide the services that are comparable to the municipalities that directly border us and all throughout Cuyahoga County. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Johnson?
Good afternoon. Council President Miller and members of council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I know me, but I'm Jennifer Johnson, the executive director of Cana Beach Child Advocacy Center. Before anything else, I just want to really truly express deep gratitude. I very much recognize that Cuyahoga County has had a part, been a partner in our child protection team from the ground up. You supported us before. You continue to support us. You see the vision. You recognize the need, and your commitment to us has allowed us to build a system that didn't exist before, one that is protecting children in a stronger and more coordinated way than ever in our county's history. We're grateful for your investment, and we're super proud of the collaborative work that we've done together. Because of your support, since 2023, the child protection team has served hundreds of children in our community. We've completed more than 160 case reviews. We've completed more than 260 medical exams to kids that didn't previously have those from a child abuse pediatrician or someone trained to respond to sexual abuse. And we've connected over 1,700 families to ongoing support. Thank you. As you know, this does not tell the full story, because behind every child and every number is a real child, a person that has a name, a family, and a future, a child that could be any single one of ours. This child deserves to be believed. This child deserves expert trauma-informed care. This child deserves to be safe and put on a path to healing. And how could anyone ever choose which child gets that? We appreciate your partnership, your leadership, and your continued commitment to protecting children. And we ask for you to continue to support and to ensure that no child in our community is left unseen, unheard, or protected. Thank you.
Gail Long?
Good afternoon, members of county council, President Miller and chairperson Turner, my councilperson. I'm basically gonna just-
Just Long, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Gail Long, taxpayer, citizen of Cuyahoga County, and advocate for Metro Health. I'm just going to paraphrase what I read to you on Monday, which is basically, please make no cuts to your subsidy to Metro Health, restore it to the current $35 million. And if you see that there's some need to adjust for inflation, I'd be really excited if you did that, too. Thank you very much.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. And I would like to bring to everybody's attention that there's also time set aside for public testimony, specifically on the budget. We do that once during each budget hearing process, and so that will come a little bit later this afternoon. And if anybody would like to speak during that time, I would invite you to see Joe Nani in the back and sign up and let him know, and we'll create a list for that. Also, the unusual Wednesday timing created a schedule conflict for Councilman Kelly, and so I would make a motion that his absence from this afternoon's meeting be excused. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the council member is excused. Matters referred to committee, Resolution 2025-0304.
Resolution 2025-0304 authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bond anticipation notes in a principal amount not to exceed $14,220,000 in anticipation of the issuance, excuse me, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to retire outstanding bond anticipation notes issued to provide funds for the purpose of paying the costs of constructing, renovating, improving, or repairing sports facilities, including specifically major capital repairs to such sports facilities, together with all necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and to pay the costs of issuance in connection therewith.
Council President, council members. Bob Franz, I am the county's financial advisor. So here to just briefly talk about the resolution before you. You should have a printout, one-page printout in front of you, and it's pretty simple. It's also on the screen. Just wanted to lay out what the existing note is, what we did earlier this year or last year, where we're at today and our plan forward. So currently, we have $14.22 million of limited tax general obligation bond anticipation notes that we sold directly to the county treasurer at a rate of 4.65%. We set that rate in January, and it's coming due next month. There's an interest payment due to the treasurer from the county of $604,290.75. That payment will be made. That has been budgeted and appropriated for. So what we're requesting today is to reissue the note for another one-year period in the same amount at an estimated rate as of this morning of 4.06%, which is based on the same formula that we used earlier this year, which was the one-year treasury plus a 40 basis point spread. So kind of culminating to an estimated interest payment of about $577,000 on December 15 of next year. Going forward, and I believe Walter can speak to this, too, what's in the budget for each the '25 and '26 years is an estimated, or a budgeted, $1,005,000 to start paying down on those, to pay down on the note. The purpose of staying in the note form as opposed to a bond form is the flexibility so that we can pay this down faster than a longer-term bond. And that's kind of the same rationale before, same rationale this time. So. Any questions?
Walter, anything to add?
Walter Parfauz from the Office of Budget Management. No, councilman, we're just ready to answer any questions. This is simply just rolling this note forward.
So, if I recall correctly, basically, the history is that we put out this note and we provided this money to the two sports teams for the ballpark and the arena, and the county treasurer itself purchased the debt, and we're paying it back over time.
That is correct, councilman.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Ms. Conwell?
To the chair, to Mr. Franz. So, once this goes through the process through council, the new refunding note will just be for a year, or will it be longer? Or could we possibly come back next year if the interest rate drops even lower?
The, Councilwoman, the tradition is one year, and then we come back. We have the pleasure of redoing this whole process again, because it is- We have the pleasure of redoing this whole process again, because it is a new issue to take out and refund the old issue. So we just kind of, what is commonly referred to as rolling the note. So we would issue new notes to take out the old notes and pay down on a portion of the principal so that we can get that principal amortized and retired.
How long is the note for? How long?
Our anticipation and plan is approximately 10 years, hopefully sooner if more money is found in the near future, but-
So the interest, even though the interest is going down, will that extra funds that were for the interest before be also applied to the note, or we're just, that's a quicker way to pay it down?
To the councilwoman, we have $1,000,500, roughly $1.5 million budgeted for the next two years. So each year, roughly $1,000,000 will be paid off on the principal of the note each year. So roughly $500,000 is the interest portion. The other $1,000,000 would bring the principal balance down.
And what's the total principal? Through the chair?
Through the chair, to councilwoman, Conwell's $14.2 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman Gallagher?
And these are to cover our obligations with the two facilities?
Correct, councilman.
So we just continue to borrow and pay the interest as we go along? Is there any indication when we're gonna finalize on a real scheduled and funding source to avoid this in the future?
Councilman, these are, this is all that we're aware of at this point in time. I don't know about the future.
So we're just gonna borrow money to do what we should be doing through the sin tax, which we all know is not enough?
I believe there's proposed legislation on the sin tax for an increase.
Oh, what would that entail? I haven't heard anything.
I don't have the details on it, but I understood that there's a proposal going forward for a sin tax increase.
You'd be the first guy to know that.
Agree with you.
Interesting how the world works. How much do we owe both teams?
$14.2 million to what we've got a note for right now. Well, we've already paid them. We're just, this is what's borrowed.
There's no outstanding, there's no outstanding debt that we have with them?
Through the chair, to the councilman, not at this point.
So these are go-forward funds?
They are.
With no, but you hear there's a plan, but there isn't a plan, so. And this is for us only, right?
Yeah, this is, through the chair, to the councilman, this is our portion only.
Okay, because we have carried Cleveland before.
On other, councilman, you're correct.
I know I'm correct.
And I know that. This is for the county's portion of the $40 million that was given to the Gateway Facilities last year. This is just the county's portion. The city's completely separate.
So for the average person out there, taxpayer out there watching this, is we're borrowing, paying interest on money for obligations we really can't afford right now, but hopefully that fix will be sometime in the near future, I'm hearing, maybe? And nothing's a fix. I get that. We know that it's not gonna be enough.
Councilman, I think your general approach on that is correct, that-
I think part of the discussion on funding going forward, part of the discussion should be how we get out of being owners in these facilities, because it has not worked. And I applaud the people that put Gateway together. They really did a number on us, but, you know, I think the piper's at the door, so we're gonna have to deal with this. There's gotta be a way to get out from underneath. Thank you.
Anything else? Just a comment that I agree about ownership. It is a problem.
Councilman, could we request second reading suspension on this item?
So, to Ms. Andrea, am I correct that it's not on tonight's agenda for second reading suspension?
It's second reading only.
So, but that can always be changed. What's the reason for needing second reading suspension?
Council President, we're just requesting that just to make sure that we can adequately space the timing out, make sure that all the parties are aligned before the $14.2 million comes due.
Okay, so we'll have to move second reading suspension when it gets to the council meeting tonight, if it's so approved. Is there a motion to recommend this item for second reading suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to ask a question. Is everything in for and everything, it's ready to go? There's no holdups? All the paperwork is in?
Through the chair, to the councilwoman, yes. It's all in good form at this point. We're about to issue the payment for 2025, the interest payment, and then for the note to start again for the next year.
It's been moved and seconded to favorably recommend this resolution for second reading suspension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is recommended.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-0300, awarding a total sum not to exceed $25,000 to Flats Forward, Inc. for the Flats revitalization project from the District III ARPA Community Grant Fund. Mr. Havillan, is your microphone on? The green button lit?
There it is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon again. Mr. President, members of county council, I'm Jim Havillan, Executive Director of Flats Ford. It is a privilege to be before you today. I want to thank Councilman Sweeney for his support of Flats Ford. We started talking about, eight months ago, about some of the initiatives we're working on around the flats and Cuyahoga River. We've gotten to a point now where these initiatives, which I'll briefly describe, are ready for implementation, and the funding I'm requesting will be very important for the success of those initiatives. Flats Ford is a nonprofit that represents all the interests of the stakeholders in the Cleveland Cliff Steel Mill down to the Port of Cleveland. Our board is made up of representatives from that area, with the largest group being the Maritime and Industry Constituent Group. And what I'll briefly talk about is the programs that I'm looking for support on that are really gonna have a real significant impact on the city, the county, and also on the Cuyahoga River. So the first is a shared camera program. It is a partnership with our stakeholders and the City of Cleveland. It is creating a connective community, linking cameras together in strategic locations in the flats that will enable law enforcement to more quickly respond to incidents of crime and other activities that occurred. What Flats Ford is looking to do, and what we need our resources for, is organizing, helping to plan, and also promote this very important project. The second is a unique partnership between Flats Ford and Argonaut, the Davis Aerospace and Maritime Industry, utilizing CMSD students to help manage docks on the flats, which would bring organization, safety, and also reliability on where docks are available. It is a program that will also open up 600 feet of currently restricted dock space on the flats' east bank. The program will, we believe, will increase visitation, safety for both boaters and the freighters that make their way through the Cuyahoga River. So this will be an important project we want to launch in the spring and receive that waiver from the United States Coast Guard that'll allow for legal docking, where right now it is not. The third is a newly created organization called the Cleveland Harbor Safety Committee. It was a, it is a partnership with the private sector and the United States Coast Guard. It used to be the Cuyahoga River Safety Task Force, if you're familiar with that. It was more of a reporting body. This is actually a private, public partnership that is going to help implement changes, safety, environmental changes on the river, with the private sector working closely with the United States Coast Guard. Flats Ford has the privilege of being the first president of the newly created Cleveland Harbor Safety Committee, and funding will help us with our operational priorities, promotion of activities, and other initiatives as well. And then lastly, all of this is going to be successful if we can communicate, and we can promote it, and we can get the word out about all these initiatives that are going to have a very positive impact on the region, which I really ask that you provide favorable consideration for this grant request. So if there's any questions, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions, Councilman Sweeney?
I defer to the Vice President for comment.
All right, thank you. So, through the chair, to Mr. Havillan, what's the total project timeline?
The project would be starting now, and we want to wrap the, these initiatives up by the spring of 2026. That is what we're striving for.
And just a side question, I like the cameras, the visibility, things like that for the safety. Are you working in tangent with the Sheriff's Department or City of Cleveland in any way?
Yes, we are. So this is through the Department of Public Safety, but on the larger initiatives in the flats, we do involve ourselves with the County Sheriff's Department as well when it comes to overall safety.
And Mr. Havillan, through the chair, total project cost?
The project cost that is associated with this ARPA grant is $141,800.
That will complete everything that you stated?
Certainly will get us on the way, and we feel it will help us implement all these activities, yes.
If you have a business card, if you could leave it with the clerk?
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments?
I'll do it very briefly.
Yes, Councilman Sweeney?
Mr. President, how you doing, Jim? How are you doing, Jim?
I'm doing very well.
Good. I've known this gentleman for a long time. With Flats Forward, it's just something I'm very confident that what he says is gonna happen with this board that he has. It's just gonna have the results that are important to that particular portion of our city of Cleveland. Has a long history of just greatness, and it's gonna continue in that path under your leadership. So I'd ask my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Conwell?
Just like to add through the chair to Mr. Havillan, this is ARPA, so it explained that it's three readings that won't, or to go through the process. Is that gonna hold you up in any way?
It will not hold us up. Thank you.
Okay. The projected date for final passage is, it would be next week, because we would have, or in two weeks, we would have the second reading tonight, and then on the 25th, we would have the final reading. So that's the projected schedule. Anything else? If not, I will make a motion to refer Resolution 2025-0300 with a favorable recommendation for second reading. Anything else?
Can I have my name at it?
Yes, please add the councilperson's name.
Might as well, please.
Conwell Schlepper.
Turner.
Turner.
Castleberry, please.
Castleberry.
Council President?
Yes.
Can I have a clarification of who seconded the motion?
Sweeney?
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, and names have been added. All those in favor of favorable recommendation to the full council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is so recommended. Next, Councilwoman Turner is gonna hear the legislation regarding the proposal to establish a building department and then proceed on to the budget hearing, so I'm gonna pass the gavel along.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the item into the record?
Ordinance 2025-0007, enacting Section 202.11 of the Cuyahoga County Code to establish a building department under the supervision of the county executive and the fiscal officer to exercise enforcement authority of and to accept and approve construction documents and conduct inspections in accordance with the rules of the State of Ohio Board of Building Standards relating to both residential and non-residential construction within the county.
Good morning. You state your name for the record.
My name is Dawn Ford. I'm the appraisal permit coordinator for Cuyahoga County. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity to bring this awesome program. For the purpose of this presentation, I'll be using the term "building department," as this is how it's stated in code, but we are open to opinions on the naming of the said department, either being Building Department or Building Standards Division, and we can discuss that at a later time. First thing I'm gonna talk about is the problem. In 2014, a survey on the building standards profession was completed by the International Code Council and the National Institute of Building Science. I do have copies of the survey, if anyone would like it. The International Code Council is a leading global source of model building code standards and advocates for the option of codes leading to the safe and healthy communities. This study revealed several challenges in the building standards profession. One of the challenges is the aging workforce. Eighty-three percent of the respondents were over the age of 45 years old, while only 3% was under the age of 35. This shows a substantial generational gap in this workforce. Another challenge we found, or there was a found, was the impending retirement. Of those surveyed, 80% of those were gonna be retired by the year of 2029. Thirty percent of that 80 were by 2019. So we are already falling behind. The survey also found a lack of recruitment for the profession. It highlighted, it highlighted a significant deficit in younger people entering the code enforcement profession, suggesting a looming staffing shortage. Eleven years later, this is becoming very evident in our area. Because of these shortfalls, smaller communities are struggling with staffing and being able to ford a standalone building department. The communities are now relying on a third-party firm to help with these staffing issues. Over 20% of our communities are hiring this third-party firm. Two smaller communities are paying well over $250,000 each for their building official services. For reference, the City of Brooklyn and Bedford are sharing a building official. His salary is roughly $110,000. So that's $55,000 instead of $250,000 for a building official service. The third-party firm is also having the same staffing problems that the communities are having, and their focus is on making money for their company, not the interest of our communities. The building department will help the shortfalls by regionalizing the building departments with no expenses to our communities. It would also create more efficient processes in coordination with the appraisal department, ensuring consistency and strengthening the accuracy of our property records. So the purpose of a building department, an Ohio State Certified Building Department is responsible for administration and enforcement of state-adopted construction codes within its jurisdiction as established by the Board of Building Standards. These codes regulate the design, construction, alteration, repair, and maintenance of residential and commercial structures, ensuring the safety, accessibility, energy efficiency, and overall welfare of the public. The Board of Building Standards is operated through the Ohio Department of Commerce with the purpose of formulating and adopting and amending codes, building codes, certifying building departments to exercise enforcement authorities in which we are seeking here, and conducting hearings and making investigations as deemed necessary. Now, the people and placement within the county. This position will report to the CFO, and the reason for this placement will be discussed a little bit later in this slide presentation. And as of right now, we do have the three key positions, is your building official. This person does need to be a registered architect or a professional engineer in design and construction of building construction field. Have three years of a Level IV, which is one of the matrix that the Board of Building Standards sets in order to get a license, or you had to have 10 years in- or you had to have 10 years in commercial, general, construction, foreman or site superintendent responsibility for supervision over all trades. That would be your mechanical, electrical, plumbing, along with your general trades, and complete a B.C., a building commissioner's test. This person is the only person who is allowed to say that a building is safe to be occupied after construction. They have to sign off on it to say that people can work and visit this location. The second position, and we're looking at this time to get, at this point, two building inspectors. The building inspector is your boots-on-the-ground person. They are the person who goes out into the job sites and the construction zones and goes and makes sure that the work that was reported on their plans is being constructed as stated in the plans. And the third position would be your permit tech. This is a Level 1 position through the Board of Building Standards. This is the person, I like to call them the oil that keeps the engine rolling. They know how to communicate with the state, they know how to communicate with the residents, and they can make these processes much easier. Every position in this department will be a certified position, starting with your Level 1 as your permit tech, your Level 3s and your building inspectors, and then your Level 5s as a building commissioner. And the importance of the building department. Their inspections aren't red tape. They're insurance policies for safety, quality, and compliance. Inspections make sure that the work meets building code and safety standards, protects occupants from hazards like fire, electrical issues, or structural failure, keeps property value strong. Buyers and lovers, or lenders love proof of property, proof of proper inspections when properties are transferred. It also ensures the owner's money is going to quality, code-compliance work. And then I had kind of given some examples on my slide as to why the importance, like Tupperware containers should not be your electrical boxes or having your electrical conduit going through downspots. This is the very much the importance of these building department. And then the solution. I have to give a little side note. That lovely gentleman on that slide is my 21-year-old ironworker. So I'm very much into building trades. I've got my children going down. I just noticed my slide was wrong, sorry. So anyways, so the solution is creating, establish a cutting-wide building department that improves safety, consistency, efficiency, permitting, and inspections. This is not a new process. Sixty-six of our 88 counties already have a county building department. Franklin, Hamilton, Summit, Lake, all have county building departments. This will help reduce our community's reliance on a third-party provider, allowing them to invest in their housing stock instead of on the building portion. They can create strong, vibrant communities. There will be no added cost to the communities. Excuse me. The municipalities will still continue to retain all use approval, meaning they will still handle their zoning, their planning, their architectural reviews, and housing and property maintenance. These efforts would support stronger collaboration and better decision-making across the county. Summit County has offered to have conversations with us on how they could support us in the creation of the building department. The Board of Building Standards is excited to see that Cuyahoga County is looking at this opportunity and have been very helpful in the process thus far. And we'll talk about the financials. With advice from the legal department, the real estate assessment fund can be used for the startup of this department. We will not have to touch any general funds. Building department will be a revenue-neutral department. The fee schedules collected will be aligned to cover all expenses. So whatever costs for a plan review is paid by the applicant. Fees will be set up so the fee schedule isn't right, so when they go out and do their inspections, all costs are covered. It's a revenue-neutral department. That is how it is supposed to be created. And in most of the counties, this is so. And then the status. As of right now, I do have interest from several communities. I am working those conversations. The townships would have one year to come to the county. There is a nuance because Homestead Township does have a building department that was established prior to 2012, so they will not have to join the county. And then my timeline. My goal is to establish a top-tier county building department that is fully operable, operational by January 1st of 2027. And I think you have any questions?
Are there any questions, Mr. Sweeney, Ms. Conwell?
Mr. Castleberry Gallagher? Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Welcome. I'm Marty Sweeney. It's nice meeting you.
I think we've met.
Well, thank you for making me look bad. That's all right.
Just a phrase in the crowd, right?
No, no, you're more than that, and I'm going to try not to turn red right now. I just think it's a long overdue, true partnership with our 59, 57 communities that are out there. And it's just going to, it's well thought out, right? Through the chair, how is this, who is the driving force behind this in regards to? This is something new, and we've been around a couple centuries, and this is the first time we're moving in this direction. Can you tell me how?
Sure. My position is a kind of new position with the county. I'm appraisal permit coordinator. A lot of people don't know what I do, so what I do is I am bridging a gap of communication between the municipal building departments and the county appraisal department to ensure we get our reporting, which is every month they're supposed to send us a report of permits issued that we look, and then we see if those permits could affect the property in some way, changing characteristics, adding an addition, changing a square foot, making their garage bigger. So prior to me starting, we had about 50% compliance rate. Last year, we had a 98% compliance rate on getting all our reporting in.
Wow.
So one of the things is when I started, I did get out to 52 of the 59 municipalities, and we're talking with the building departments. And I kind of stumbled upon a lot of this third-party firm, so you weren't able to meet with building officials as much. And I started researching a little bit, and I thought that, you know, having a county building department, I think the time is right now. I do believe it was kind of tossed around in the past, and working with several building officials in my past position, it just came up in conversation. So I just thought, you know, talking with them and then kind of seeing what I seen, it was a great opportunity for the county at this time.
Thank you for the fuller explanation, and through the chair, your idea embraced by the administration, and that's why we're here right now.
Yes, sir.
And through the chair, when I heard third-party, what'd you call them?
Third-party firm.
Firm. There's other three words. Not very good. They like, some of the third-party firms take advantage of the cities that they're in. That's just things that I've heard over time.
I feel they are more in there for their financial benefit instead of the communities.
I shouldn't say they don't do a good job. They need to make money.
Correct.
And sometimes they make a lot of money.
Very much so.
And sometimes the product ain't as good as, or isn't as good as some people hoped.
But when there's not an option, that's the choice they had.
Oh, absolutely. I'm trying to build you up.
I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, so right now, this is a reaction, that's a response to that, not only from your own due diligence, but with the third-party folks, this is going to give options to the cities that are going to make them.
Yeah, with 20% of our communities using them in some manner.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Okay, well, I can guarantee next time I'll remember you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Madam Chairwoman.
Mr., I'm not sure who was next, Ms. Conwell, and then Mr. Castleberry?
Right, through the chair to Ms. Ford?
Yes.
You answered most of my questions.
Thank you.
Kept answering them as I was writing them, but I do still have two more. Is the plan to have an MOU or a master contract with each of the municipalities?
There would be a contract of agreement to become one of our sub-departments. So what will happen is they'll actually see us twice for legislation, one's in creation and one's in getting it certified through the state. So this is the first step. The second step would become certified, and that's where I would have my commitments from the communities become a sub-department.
Is there, I know we'll be saving them money, right? So what, what would be the cost or any cost that the city would have to pay?
They're not going to have to pay for the service from us because the fees that we will charge to applicants who would like to do the construction will cover the expenses. So it would be free to our communities to save them money instead of taking money. I can tell you, several of our other counties do have these county building departments, and they are revenue-generating.
Okay, so these are commercial properties only?
No, ma'am. Both residential and non-residential.
Okay, and is it just for new construction or things that are already?
No, it will be, we are going to be, because there's legislation that changed at the state level back in July. We will be opting in to doing the remodeling permits too.
So code enforcers to me, you know, I get a lot, a lot of calls for, you know, neighbors or residents, right? So will it be going, will our department go into that depth?
Right, two separate departments, and it has been intermingled for many years in our smaller communities because that's what they have to do. This will be a building department, and the housing department is who handles your property maintenance, neighbor complaints, peeling paint, those type of things.
So we won't have that housing department? And so which, this committee, or whenever you get your plans up, will, for reporting purposes, to us to let us know, you know, how you're doing and how far you have to go, that will fall under finance?
Yes, fiscal, right.
Fiscal, or would it go to Public Works?
I'm sorry, Katie Gallagher, the Executive Office. The position would be reporting to the fiscal officer. However, whatever committee you would like to have the reporting will be up to County Council.
Mr. Castleberry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Ford, for being here. Appreciate your presentation. I was just going to ask if you can speak to the success of the program in some of the other counties. I think you mentioned Summit County, and give us an example of what these departments look like.
Yeah, Summit County is very similar to our form of government. Their department is very successful. This year, they actually took on portions of Akron, which is a very large community because they were struggling. So I can tell you that they did bring over $900,000 back in excess.
Great, and thank you. And also, can you tell us, any of the cities that I've already inquired? Are you not privy to say that right now, or is it? Can you give maybe a number even, if you don't have to maybe say my name?
I have five.
Five, okay, and thank, and how big do you think our department can become? What do you anticipate this department looking like in three, five years?
So I can, I would like to see a West Side, East Side office. I could see it growing into something like that if it, you know, being successful and we get it started up properly, in which I do feel I have that confidence that we will get it. We will also have limitations right now on the size of communities. I'm not sure that we would look into the cities of Cleveland's or your Parma's, your Solons, the larger communities who can self-sustain the fee structure of holding a full standalone department. So I could see, right now, I can see 18 communities that could easily use us.
And with the 18 communities, are you looking at 18 inspectors? One per community, or you're going to split these up, I'm assuming, for some of the smaller communities?
Well, right now, the goal is to get the building official in, and I will work with the building official to create the full department with the processes and the policies in place. I do see could potentially be one building commissioner with half a dozen, dozen inspectors who would be, you know, dictated, do we want to do West Side one day, East Side? Those would be kind of nuances we'd have to work out. But I do see it growing into something very much larger. And my slide, appears you guys may have gotten older version. My goal would be to have, once this is standing up and the building official is in, I would like to create a training program to get the building inspectors trained.
That's, I understand. I've seen that in my city in Parma. They have issues getting people trained. They have some people that are willing, but it's not always, you know, they have to go through that. So a training program would be great, but.
Yeah, City Cincinnati has a great program that is supported through the Board of Building Standards, so very something we would look into.
Well, thank you for your answers.
Please, Mr. Gallagher? Did you have your hand up? No, Mr., you did. Yes, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. We, this is to provide this service. Why would we create a whole division to provide this service? That's billed back, so we'll be paid back, right? Any services that we provide, they'll cover the cost of that service.
Correct.
We do that for sewers.
I don't know the answer to that question, but.
But we clean sewers out for cities, and they pay back. And that's through Public Works. My point is, why would we create a whole new division for a service that's going to be billed back?
Are you asking why we're putting it under fiscal, or?
Why are we creating a whole new division when this should, in my opinion, be under Public Works?
Good afternoon. Chris Oliverata, Director of Regional Collaboration. Councilman, that's a good question. And there were conversations years back about having this be under Public Works. One of the cogent reasons for having this under the fiscal office is because it's tied directly to appraisals, being able to accurately track improvements that are made to properties, both through new construction, but also through renovations of existing buildings. Creating a new department is something that's required, my understanding, under higher-revised code. And so we need to be able to have a separate entity under the county to be able to handle this particular work. The fees are not, again, as Ms. Ford described, are not being paid by the municipalities, but are being, the revenues are generated through each of the permits that are issued, and the payments are made by the developers or by the property owners, those who are actually doing the work. Does that answer your question?
I kind of, you know, we're struggling here in the county to provide minimal services obligations, and here we are expanding them. And I don't think this is a bad idea at all, at all. I think anytime we can help provide a service and get the money paid back, although the cost of our employees isn't factored in there. And as I heard you, you already went from this to expanding east-west if possible, so you're talking even more employees. And my experience with government is, is if you can, it's like the cleaning of the sewers. We don't lose a nickel, and we're providing a service for people that need it. That's all billable. That's all paid back, so we don't lose any money. How are we paying for these individuals, or is that part of the bill back?
Yeah, so this is a requirement through the Board of Building Standards, through creation of department. You have, through the state, you have to create a building department. It has to be its own department. What we call it, or where it sits in our organization, is our choice. For funding, I needed it to be under fiscal.
And what, many experience that I had when I was on a city council, there's a lot of, there's a lot of back and forth with the residents as far as permits, as far as inspections, as far as setbacks and things like that. Many times, it goes to court. Whose cost is that?
I'd like to be, get clarification on what permit, not housing code violation, what permit has went to court?
Oh, I've seen, I've seen neighbors file suit against neighbors that were permitted, and now we're in court. Who pays for that? Believe it or not, neighbors fight.
Right. The understanding here is that the municipalities still retain their home rule and all of the police functions that would be a part of this.
So that cost goes to them.
That is our understanding of this point, but I think that's something that's worth diving into because I think that's a cogent question. The way that this works for other counties is that the county building departments essentially act as subject matter experts that provide certain services, but anything that's beyond that would remain with the municipality.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Miller?
Councilman Schlepper was next.
Actually, Mr. Hauser would be next if that's the case. I've been writing it down how I saw the hand go up.
To the chair, to the speaker, I have a couple questions. I also think this is a good idea. I think it'd be beneficial for a city like East Cleveland, who has a shortage of both building inspectors and housing inspectors. How would the city ideally contact the county to get someone out? And then I also have another question. Every city has different like codes and regulations. How are you guys anticipating that as well?
Right, and again, this is the confusion between building and housing. Building code is building code. There is construction code enforced by the state of Ohio. The Ohio Building Code or Electric Code, whatever, National Electric Code. Housing code are usually within their zoning code or within their ordinances. I am working with one community because their ordinances are very cross-blended between their housing and building departments. So they have to look through their legislation to get that crystal line between housing and building functions. So does that answer the question?
It didn't. So inspectors for this program would only focus on buildings or housing or? Please explain more.
Yes, so the only inspections our inspectors would be doing would be after a permit has been issued for construction or rehabilitation for a structure.
Okay.
So they go out, they are putting a 10,000 square foot addition on a home, which is unrealistic. But someone's putting an addition on. Our inspectors would go to that home to ensure the framing's right, the insulation right, the plumbing's right, the electrical's right. It's all constructed to how the plans were set. They would not be handling neighbor disputes. My neighbor's tree is coming onto my property and the sleeves are falling.
So this department would only be focusing on new builds?
New construction and rehabs, yes.
Okay, so this, so, okay. So this is not for like housing, so this building, this department would not be able to help a city like East Cleveland from a housing inspector point of view?
At this point, no. No housing functions.
We're gonna have to change that then because I think we have a great opportunity with a department like this to help a smaller city, especially a city in need like East Cleveland. So if we have to do any amendments or anything else, for my support, it definitely would have to be able to be all encompassing. And I'm happy to work with the administration to see what we can do. But for only new builds, I don't know if it benefits our resident and rehab. And rehabs, our residents already are in their homes, are long-term homeowners. I think we have a great opportunity here and so we can maybe flesh out that conversation a little more.
Through the Chair, to the Councilmen. So part of what this also helps communities with is to make that clear delineation between those building inspection functions and the housing inspection functions. So while it doesn't directly, this department doesn't directly help municipalities like a city of East Cleveland with issues around code violations or the like, what it does do is allows the city to be able to have their staff focus on a day-to-day basis on those code violations, doing the inspections, checking curb appeal and making sure that issues around mold or the like are being addressed. It frees up the work of, that you actually need somebody who is certified in a building inspection to go out there and to do, to do that work. One of the things that we say is that we have a lot of our municipalities essentially paying plumbers to flush toilets, right? That's the, that's the way that I can describe it. You're having, a lot of municipalities are having either their third-party vendors or a certified building official go in and look at things like mold issues or rental inspections or the like, paying a lot of money to do that, but in ways that are very unnecessary. So instead of paying a premium for somebody who has that certification to go in and do a rental inspection, you can instead have somebody who doesn't need that kind of a qualification, but who can just focus on the health and well-being of residents in their properties actually do that work. And those are also ways, and Ms. Ford described one of our interactions with the municipality around us taking a look at how it is that they can separate these two functions. We'll be able to provide, you know, that kind of guidance and cost savings to those municipalities.
So what it is, a housing personnel who does violations or looks at the exterior of a house to look at property maintenance, you don't need a license and education to do that. These positions of electrical inspectors, plumbing inspectors, building officials have to go through a lot of education and a lot of training and continuing education to stay on top of the current code, where a property maintenance, you know, needing to paint their home and their grass is a position that is a growing opportunity for someone else who doesn't require a license. So the community can spend less money on a certified position to a regular person that doesn't need a certification to help with their housing stock. You don't need a certification to inspect your housing programs, if that makes sense.
It does, and this might not be the vehicle, but I've even, we tried to bring the Heritage Home Program to East Cleveland, which I know is not continuing. But to even get in that program, you got to get like a home inspection in East Cleveland and have the adequate inspectors to even get people in the program and take advantage of the resources. So this might be a bigger conversation and I look forward to working with the administration to see what we can do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schlepper? Is it germane to what was just being discussed? You can wait, Mr. Schlepper?
Hi there. Through the Chair, and thank you, Ms. Ford, for being here today. I just had a couple of questions about, and I think they were more or less answered, but just a little bit of clarity. So obviously, this would kind of be post the planning and zoning or architectural review stage?
So I can see it running concurrently. So my vision is applicant would come and drop off their construction plans to the county building department. They would then go to the municipal, you know, housing or zoning administrator, have their plans reviewed for zoning compliance, architectural review board, and whatever they need to do with the municipalities. The municipality would then generate a letter saying, we approve these, this construction of this building would come over to us. We would review the plans and before we would issue a permit, we would have to have that city approval.
Okay, yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me. This was already mentioned, but I was kind of curious about different priorities in different municipalities. So when I think about things like historic preservation, right, and some of our.
Sugar Valley's and.
Yeah, which is where I actually happen to live and I've sat in those meetings and they can be incredibly contentious and.
Right.
So I was just kind of curious about how those municipalities, you know, how we would honor the commitments that they're making to things like historic preservation or, you know, some of our older buildings that they want to keep intact, but obviously put some new processes in place, what that might look like. And then in the midst of that, can those municipalities, I know we are home rules, so can they opt out if they already have a similar office in place? And if they don't, can they still opt out if they wanted to contract this work out themselves?
So there's no opting in or opting out. Through the state, it's you are a certified building department and you have to list a primary and a backup for each position. So these communities that are taking the third-party companies, they are listing as their first person in their department, as their first primary. So it's not like this third-party organization is now labeled as their, it's just a piece of paper that says that this person who works for this third-party organization is now our building official.
I think more in the interest of, could they opt out? If this were created and this office came to be, could that municipality opt out and choose someone else other than the county to provide these services?
Yeah, essentially municipalities have to opt in. So automatically municipalities are not contracted with the building department. So our conversations that we've had through Mayor's and Managers Association for suburbs and with individual municipalities, they would have to choose. They would have to pass legislation through their village or city councils stating that they want to have the county building department provide these services. So it's an opt-in rather than opt-out.
That's very helpful because I guarantee you I'm gonna get 20 phone calls about this, 100%. Trust me. Okay, and then from an economic development perspective, the educator in me wants to ask this question about the declining numbers of building inspectors. In your opinion, is this an opportunity for us as a county to maybe lead the charge in the creation of an educational program or a partnership with, let's say, whatever educational entity? Is this something that we can do and is it something that, you know, we feel is desperately needed at the moment?
Yeah, that's one of, I wasn't supposed to be on the slide, but that was my phase two is successfully creating an education program to go to like our trade schools, Polaris. I know there's, I'm a West Sider, obviously. So I know there's some East Side trade schools. Get into those programs, the building trades, construction trades program, looking at these high school students, creating like an apprenticeship or fellowship type program is what I was looking into. Because someone who has been in a electrical contractor for 10 years is kind of a requirement to become an electrical safety inspector, you're making $200 an hour. You're gonna come work for a municipality for $40 an hour? That's where we are. You know, these tradesmen are well-deserving of their money, but we have to create another avenue. And that's why I support this department being 100% certified through the Board of Building Standards, having to have a certificate for every position.
I think this is fantastic, very exciting stuff. So thank you for your work with us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller and then Ms. Simon?
Just a couple of questions. Is this for the county, is this gonna be revenue generating or is it gonna be revenue neutral? Is it gonna create a surplus of money for the county? Or is it only gonna cover the expenses for the inspections, but nothing more?
A building department is supposed to be revenue neutral. I can't guarantee it will be revenue generating. It will be minimum of revenue neutral. While I would like it to be revenue generating, the code has to be revenue neutral.
Okay. Second question is. Could this be more difficult for contractors in the sense that they would have to go to the municipality for some things and go to the county building department for other things as opposed to just going to the municipality for the whole thing?
It could cause a little bit more legwork for the contractor or whoever may be doing the work. I do anticipate this department being 100% paperless, being they do not have to come to our office. They have the opportunity to do everything online for the county portion. I see in my vision that it would be paperless. There would be no need to meet with a person in person at the county. So it would just be more of, you know, what the processes of that communities would be. Do they accept electronic applications? It may be as simple as, you know, working on those, you know, nuances when we get to that point of having them be a same electronic submittal.
And just for additional clarification, in the work that we're, in the conversations that we've been having with municipalities, this has also been directly tied to being able, having those municipalities upgrading their software that's used to submit permits and to track the permits. So if recall, you know, for the last couple of years, we've provided grants to, for suburbs to be able to provide grants to municipalities to upgrade their systems for tracking building permits and the like. And that helps us at the county because we get to know as close to real time as possible what has been submitted, what kind of improvements have been made. The goal here is to have that same software or type of software to be shared between those municipalities and the county so that when a permit is filed, the municipality and the county know, and the county building department know at the same time. So that you don't necessarily have to have a contractor come downtown, figure out the parking, figure out what floor to go to and come here. They can submit that online and do it in a very expedient fashion. I do want to go back and address, Council President, your initial question. At the very least, these, this department has to be revenue neutral, again, per the state. But what we've also seen, looking at similar counties like Summit County, that has created over $900,000 net revenue to the county, this is something that can, and our goal is, should be able to provide a revenue, revenue source to Cuyahoga County. The reason a lot of our municipalities don't, aren't not able to generate funds with their building departments is because they don't have the volume of new construction and rehabs that are needed to be able to support an individual city or village building apartment. Or they go to a third party where they're having to spend extra in order to have that building, that third party provide those services. So what we're doing at the county is taking advantage of being able to conglomerate a number of municipalities in a regional way. It doesn't have to be municipalities that are connected to each other, but actually bringing in multiple cities and villages to share staff. Staff would be here at the county, but to provide that cost savings to the municipalities where we're able to have the volume of business that's needed to be able to have this at least be revenue neutral, if not revenue generating to the county.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Ms. Simon?
Thank you. So do you anticipate a contract? Maybe I missed this, for a year? What terms would the city be entering into an agreement with the county?
I think it would be, I would say at least a year. I don't know that there would be terms.
We would want to do this at least on a year-by-year basis, if not actually be able to nail down five years or so. We want to be able to have some sense of stability, not just for us, the county, but also for the municipality to be able to know who's gonna be able to handle this.
And what cities have weighed in with positive feedback?
I think, well, okay, you know what, we'll just go ahead. And we've had positive conversations with Valley View, Newburgh Heights, Maple Heights. Our understanding is also we've had conversations with South Euclid. The mayor there is looking at doing something very similar. And in those conversations, the understanding is that there's more than enough work that's needed out there. There are multiple municipalities, dozens of municipalities that aren't actually generating revenue through their, through their building departments. And this was something that the city was comfortable with, basically two entities sharing the same, sharing the same space, given the amount of need that there is here in the county.
Sure, and what about the city of Cleveland? Have you met with them?
At this time, it's not a community. We want to stick with our smaller communities that aren't making funds, aren't able to support a fully standalone building department is our focus. We want to help the smaller communities first. I, again, I think I had mentioned, you might not have been here yet, that like Parma's, sorry, Parma's, Cleveland's, South Euclid, you're larger, who are profitable. We, they are self-sustaining. We want to help the smaller communities, you know, the 20 communities that don't, you know, are issuing under 100 permits a year, under, you know, 500 permits a year. These communities that are issuing, you know, 2,000, 1,500 permits a year generally have enough revenue coming in to support a self-standing department.
Yeah, I like this. And to follow up with Councilman Hauser's question about what more can you do? Is this something you'd be looking at doing in the future? Start off with this and make sure that this actually works and then see if you can expand it later into housing, I think? Or just?
I think we're open to that, but we want to do this well first.
That's what I'm asking. You want to make sure this works?
That is exactly it.
With one-year, one to five-year contracts with cities and then see what the demand and what you can provide.
That's it, I think it would be a mistake for us to, and I think it sounds like you agree, that trying to get in front of our skis here and trying to do too many things, one will result in a department that's actually revenue negative, that actually costs the county. But as importantly, it just creates confusions for the municipalities that we're working with. We want to be able to provide good services in a way that is clear for municipalities and is also revenue neutral or revenue positive for the county.
Yeah, thanks a lot. This is a concrete way we can regionalize and help and I've always been an advocate of that. So I appreciate the administration on this one.
Mr. Castleberry?
Thank you. I have one more follow-up and it has to do with, we talked about the communities signing up for one to five years or. So is there any opportunity, so maybe some of these bigger communities, to have an agreement? Not necessarily be all in, maybe use us as a backup? Or is there, like in an emergency situation, health issues, they're down inspectors for whatever reason, is there any opportunity for that?
Absolutely. We just had one of our smaller communities, I believe it was Oakwood. Unfortunately, their building official passed away in February and they were in a loss at a scramble. So they had to go to the third-party firm. So we would alleviate them having to go to a third-party. We would be here to be their new.
So in that situation though, do they need to opt into the program?
All that would be, would be getting a contract and agreeing to become a sub-department of the county building department.
And then they could use us, the county department, as a needed basis then? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Conwell?
Thank you. Through the Chair to Ms. Ford. To my colleague Point, Mike Gallagher, you talked about how. To my colleague Point Mike Gallagher, you talked about how this could possibly expand to additional costs for the county in the future if we hire employee, you know, things like that.
It still would be no... The fees schedule that you set up should be reviewed at minimum every three years to ensure you are profitable or revenue generated or revenue neutral. So, you review it every three years. Summit County is going through it right now. You review your fee schedule to ensure you are not losing money.
But when you expand...
You prepare.
Okay.
You got to prepare for an expansion. So, you got to make sure everything is set in line, that you know when we're ready to expand, we will be profitable.
And what about in terms of part of its training for new code enforcers and things of that nature?
Again, that's... I want to get this established and be a shining star for Cuyahoga County. Once we become that shining star, I would look into... I would like to look into the training program. Like I mentioned, city of Cincinnati just created a program. I think this was their first graduating class this year with the Board of Building Standards. I think they had 16 people that came through. That's a very large building department down there.
Okay. So, that's just my suggestion. So, if when we get to that point and we move to that point in training, training costs, we should possibly look at partnering with Tri-C and other organizations that do this.
Yes, Tri-C and then the local trade schools and that kind of stuff to get their high school students' wheels turning.
Just wanted to put that on the record aside. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher.
So anyhow, so the fee is usually what the cities use to fund the building departments. So, you're shifting the fee over to the county? And we're going to set fees for cities? Or they have to agree to the fee?
No. We become their building department. They don't have a say-so on the fee schedule. It would be what we agree upon here in the county in reviewing our records on what we need for fees.
So, you... We set the fees that should cover our nut?
Mm-hmm. Our rental of our space, our employees' benefits, our employees' salaries, everything, 100%.
So, if done correctly?
Correct.
This will not cost us any money and will only cost the cities that are being provided the service?
No, it's not going to cost... We're not going to be charging our communities. Absolutely not.
Going to live off the fees?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't want to have our municipality... That's what we're trying to help, is save them money. We don't want to cost them money.
The last time we got into one of these things, we did a jail contract with Cleveland and it looked great. Everybody loved it until they didn't. So, we're kind of once-bit, twice shy.
I completely agree.
But again, I'm not against program. I get it. I understand the struggle and the need for it. And the success of our sewer program obviously makes people that use it very happy. And we get good reviews, so...
I use it personally for myself in Brooklyn.
All right. And we don't want to make money on these people. We just want to hit that sweet spot.
Correct.
Ms. Conwell.
One follow-up to the chair to Ms. Ford. So, the only cost right now to Cuyahoga County is the position, right?
My startup costs. Because the way the process has to run, I have to ask for your approval to create the department. Once I get approval from your team, I can then start hiring of the personnel. And then, once I get the personnel hired, then I can register to become certified with the state of Ohio. But in order to get certified, I have to have the personnel with their licenses to put on the application.
What would be the cost for that?
We have budgeted a million.
May I interject? I just want to clarify one more thing, Katie Gallagher, executive office. Startup costs, the nice part about this, and again, I go back to Dawn's slide, is the reason it's in the fiscal department is that our law department has done a review. This is not general fund money that would be paying for it. This is real estate assessment dollars. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Can the fees be set to enable you to recoup the startup costs over time? Or is that money just lost?
I believe we do have a plan that we could pay back the REA funds once we are established.
Okay.
Thank you.
Real estate assessment.
Mr. Gallagher.
Did you say could recoup them or will recoup them?
That's a good clarification. I'll be honest, I don't know what the mechanism is. Say, you know, we use the $1 million or less of REA funds to get the department up and going. The revenues that are generated generally go back into the general fund. I honestly don't know whether the funds would then go from the general fund back into the REA. You know, as you obviously recall, there was a rebate back to municipalities from the REA fund recently. But there are a number of ways that these funds that are generated by the department, after, of course, paying for the cost of the department in the first place. Any net of the expenses could be used for a variety of purposes, including just going back into the general fund or any other purposes that we at the county...
Maybe it's more complicated, but any monies that come out to provide this service and to create it should go back to where those monies came from. Because if we're talking neutrality, that's neutrality. So, if you're going to take a million out regardless of the fund and you're not going to put it back in, then we lost a million bucks. So, let's make it neutral all the way through. And if you have to rethink that, then rethink it. And I'm sure there's work around there.
I'm sure we can get it, you know, if council would like us to pay it back, then that's something we will achieve.
We would love for you to pay it back.
Yeah, this will be a... I'm anticipating a positive conversation about this.
So, I would add that that's not so clear and obvious. There's... Whenever we can use funds other than the general fund to do something, it's generally advisable. And if we can use the REA funds to set up this program, but then have the money that's generated by the program come back to the general fund, that might be better. So, we should keep an open mind on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that there are no further questions, this item was for discussion only. So, no vote is required at this time. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am, Madam Clerk.
I'm going to break in here and say that this item was introduced. It's up for hearing today. And if we're ready to move forward, we should move to refer it to the full council for second reading. If we're not... If we're not ready to move forward, we can hold it in committee. But it is up for possible referral.
I recognize Mr. Hauser.
We can move forward.
I'll second that.
Was that a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Madam Clerk, is the move seconded?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
There was no discussion, Madam Clerk.
No, I just want to make sure that you're really not ready to go on the finance side of it. If you can close those loopholes before the third reading, it would be greatly appreciated.
And just remember, do you have to come back to after the creation for Ashley to get it certified? And at that time, I have to submit to the state a budget.
Understood. But as we're dealing with the budget, I just... I don't want to take a million from Peter over here and then have it paid back and then we have a million dollars thrown in at a general fund for Paul's party. You know what I mean? So, as long as the dollars are being moved expeditiously and incorrectly, then I think we're good. But I think you need that writing and a plan to help me out there with that. And I'm sure you can do that. I don't think that's a problem.
I don't think so either.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are we in order?
Yes. And I would like the record to reflect that Councilmember Simon is in attendance.
Okay. Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, are we in order? We had a motion?
Yes, we had a motion.
Voted? We had discussion?
Yes.
We're in order.
So, now we're moving on to resolution 0293. If you want to read your statement.
So, we don't have any departmental hearings as we completed them last week. As a reminder, we asked OBM and the sheriff to come back on November 17th to further discuss the differences in the recommended budget. Okay, any questions about that? Okay. And although we already had public comment, we will now be taking public testimony on the recommended budget. I will ask each speaker to limit their comments to five minutes. You don't have to take five minutes. We're just not going over five minutes. Those wishing to give public testimony were asked to sign in with our chief of staff, Joe Nani. We will now have the clerk call upon individuals one by one.
Michael Searing.
Greetings, council. I'm Michael Searing, Chief Program Officer for Lutheran Metropolitan Ministry. Thank you for receiving continued input on the budget. I had shared written comment and verbal testimony before you on October 28th. The heart of that centered around our provision of shelter at the 2100 2020 Lakeside Campus and additional homeless services. That draft budget would result in a much larger reduction than it might appear. This is because our previous contract was 10 months, not 12, and included one-time ARPA program dollars. Those factors combined for rejected $1.2 million shortfall. That recommended budget would amount... Would be enough to operate the 2100 2020 Shelter Campus, including other funding cuts. That budget shrinks by $440,000 from 2025, which is challenging, but we understand these are challenging times. Federal cuts, decreases in SNAP and other benefits could create a surge in homelessness, which adds to our concern for continuing the additional services we provide and ask for consideration of funding those too. The first grouping is our family overflow services, as seen on the chart. Thank you for putting that up. This includes overflow shelter when the traditional family shelters are full, serving 278 households and 781 people annually. The other part of our family services is our family flex fund, serving 96 households and 361 people. Those families are all from the Cuyahoga County's Continuum of Care Shelter System. For an average of $1,200, we can fast-track a family into housing and have a 94% success rate of housing stability after one year. Both of these components provide capacity to the family shelter system. Full funding of these family services is $1.2 million. And fortunately, both of them are scalable to higher or lower service levels. The second service of concern is the singles overflow site and transportation, which provides overflow shelter for women and daily transportation to and from at approximately $70,000 per year. We would be glad to work with council and the Office of Homeless Services on these services with any funding amount to continue them in 2026. So, thank you for having me and I'd be open to any questions if helpful.
As this is public comment, I'm not sure. Are we taking questions?
Council President, are we taking questions in regards to this public comment for the testimony portion?
This is public testimony and not public comment. So, I would recommend that we should allow for questions.
Okay. Learning on the fly here. Are there any questions? Okay. Mr. Sweeney?
Nice seeing you. You guys do wonderful work and the times are tough, but you're in the mix on trying to figure it out. That's what this is all about. And I want to thank you for coming out and the advocacy by you and some other folks. Just you see it in your face and the rest of your team here. So, just keep up the advocacy and we're going to take it serious. And at the end of the day, we're going to make a decision. But just know these comments and your time down here is not wasted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Just a quick summary question. What's the total amount per year additional that you're requesting in addition to what was provided in the recommended budget?
Yes. Thank you. $1.2 million would fund those additional services that I mentioned, which are the family overflow capacity, the flex fund for the families and the transportation to overflow.
And are these services that you're providing now or would these be in addition to what you're providing now?
These are the current services that we're providing in 2025.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hauser.
Just very quickly, I'm going to second Councilman Sweeney's comments. You guys do excellent work. You know, homelessness and housing is critical in Cuyahoga County. And so, we will look into our due diligence, but your efforts are not in vain. So, we appreciate you coming down.
Okay. That's it. Who did you bring with you today?
I'm joined by my staff partners, our CEO, Maria Fosha, our Director of Housing and Shelter, Aaron Cray, and from our advocacy department, William Tartar and Heather Paramore.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. Okay. No further questions.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Lou.
Hey, good afternoon again. Now, this time, instead of me... Well, I wouldn't say yelling or shouting at you, but instead of me talking to you, this time you will have your opportunity to ask me questions publicly. So, I do appreciate this opportunity. Mr. Michael Searing just mentioned one particular service. It's not only LMM needs help, it's also family shelters and even the hell. We need the help. That transportation part of it. For some strange reason, lots of the departments, when they work on projects, they do not really... I know they don't have a crystal balls, but it seems like they don't even think ahead enough, which creates lots of drawbacks for later, especially later when it comes to meeting the budget. When construction started at Hale, for example, they know they had to separate people in order to have a construction. However, I don't know why nobody thought about that while you are doing this. People experience homelessness, they were still coming into the shelter system. The plan they made sounded good at the time, but actually from last year, we still have new people coming in for the very first time in their life, every day. Last night in Hale, we had elderly people. She just got discharged from the hospital. She had to sleep on the chairs and her walkers. The construction money was from ARPA funds, yes. But the problem is, we got into this trouble. LMM has to help transport extra people now to a third location, which is a church, to stay overnight, then transporting the people back. That means lots of planning throughout the time. They have lots of, lots of flaws, which actually cost our budget accuracy. Now, federal government right now wants to talk about the error rate. How about this kind of error rate happening in lots of our Health and Human Services? We probably should start hiring people who has a far-sided eyes. Well, that's just a metaphor. People should be more proactive. We should hire the people based on the work we wanted to provide, not just taking anybody in for the sake of just getting them in to fill the seats. You are working diligently to protect our money. Now, you are having a hard time. Why? Because lots of things right now you have to fight against actually is from the law. Because lots of things right now you have to fight against, actually is from the long-term accumulations. In that case, when the food and, uh, health cares are in jeopardy, please understand, the unhoused population will increase. Actually, last month, we already have veterans. They got discharged in the hospital, right now they sleeping in the cemetery. In Cleveland, in Cuyahoga County, our outdoor, unsheltered, unhoused population actually still increasing. Please understand, your priority really will help lots of people's survival, to keep their life. So when they can get back on their feet, they will can contribute back to the community. Instead of lots of people right now, even they come to the shelter, their housing plan is to leave Cuyahoga County, or even to leave Ohio. This is a very desperate situation. If we want to provide services and we only just try to give every such a little bit money, so they can only hire the people not in the higher quality they cannot offer, even the training cannot help to improve them. Guess what will happen? This is why the city of Cleveland losing population quickly, Cuyahoga County also losing population as well. If we do not get all these fundamental stuff funded properly, all those bells and whistles, they may look good, but they are not really building up all the gaps in the bigger picture. So I have all other stories I can provide, but you can shoot me questions now.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lou?
Don't miss me, I'm right here.
I think I'm afraid to ask her a question.
Oh, you are not afraid of asking. For example, I want to praise, uh, uh, Mr. Sweeney. He actually raised a very good question, which actually will help the county to save the money. Why we have all these buildings, which are providing public services but owned by nonprofit, those nonprofits, they are not properly funded either. They cannot get a proper funding to even fill up their staff, train their staff. For example, Hale, why the Hale cannot be just like 2100, 20, uh, sorry, 2100 and, uh, 20, sorry, I got our address a little bit wrong, but you know, I'm talking about men's shelter that campus. Why the women's shelters, the campus, cannot be also owned by the county directly, which actually will save the money? Same thing. Family shelters, they all started as, you know, uh, uh, little organizations. And county actually can have a better planning to help them to better facilitate them as well. That would decrease the, uh, trouble that we have never had enough home, family shelter beds for the families.
Thank you, Ms. Lou.
Any other question?
Who got the gavel?
Who got what?
You running the meeting? That's your time, Ms. Lou.
Oh, thank you too.
Thank you.
Any more questions? That's your opportunities. Thank you.
Okay.
Larry Bresler?
County Council President Miller, Finance Committee Chair, uh, Chair Turner and members of County Council. My name is Larry Bresler, and I'm speaking on behalf of Northern Ohioans for Budget Legislation Equality, Noble. Has, as we have been learning about the Cuyahoga County, the proposed Cuyahoga County budget, we are deeply disturbed with the cuts to such critical needs as housing, healthcare, mental health, and children's services. And as I was, as I looked at the, the budget itself, it was just one red line after another, which to, to all the, to all the critical needs. And clearly, you know, this is, uh, you know, is that, and, you know, one, if, as you're cutting one, it impacts the other, as Mike Searing was talking about in terms of the impacts of other kinds of services that are happening. And we recognize most of these cuts are necessary due to the substantial cuts to the funding coming from the current federal administration and Congress, with at the same time, no support from our Governor and General Assembly. So ultimately, what you have here is a pay, you know, as you're looking at the budget, if it's to be passed as it is, you're, you're in a situation where there's a pair, a pay Peter to pay Paul kind of circumstance, where you have to draw from one to support another. We also recognize, as I'm sure you do, that these cuts in critical needs programs are almost certainly going to get worse over the next three years. Consequently, we at Noble believe it's vital for Cuyahoga County to begin to look for ways to generate additional income to protect and save critical needs programs and services in Cuyahoga County. Therefore, Noble is asking you to work with the County Executive, Ronane, to establish and convene a task force composed of elected officials, administrative officials, and local leaders to evaluate and recommend new source, new sources of income to protect our critical needs. These, the, this, uh, the sources of income potentially could include a new Health and Human Services levy, an increase in the sales tax, easing instructions to the use of the current sales tax, or drawing from the County Reserve. And there may be many, there may be many others as well. As we move forward in these very difficult times, when our federal government is seeking to abandon our low-income and vulnerable populations, it is so necessary that we maintain the necessary and effective programs that exist for the residents of Cuyahoga County. We strongly urge you to immediately establish a task force that works to try to save our critical needs and program services by generating new income. Thank you.
Jay? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's had a question, Ms. Bresler, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about the functionality of this task force?
I think that what we're, what we're, what we're asking for is that, um, is that, is that there, is that at this point, with, um, with so many of the needs being cut, as you, you know, as, as Mike Searing was talking about earlier, all the impacts are going to be happening to the home, to the unhoused population in Cleveland, with, with, uh, with other, with other cuts happening. And so things are going to be getting worse and worse. And somehow, we need to be looking here in Cuyahoga County of ways to get, to generate, to generate, uh, revenue on a local basis so that we can be able to meet those needs.
Okay, is this, um, intra, intergovernmental effort? Is this?
I, I would, I think as, as we've thought about it personally, we thought it needs to be, um, cert, I think being intergovernment makes sense, but also I think that we need, you need to bring other community leaders, business leaders together, that where you can all, we can all be working on this together.
Finally, for me, can you give me the, uh, breakdown of the acronym again, Noble?
Northern Ohioans for Budget Legislation Equality.
Thank you. Any other further question, Mr. Miller?
I don't have a question, but I just want to take this opportunity to commend you for a lifetime of public service and advocating for those most in need in our community.
Thank you, President Miller.
Thank you. Any further questions? Madam Clerk, turn it back to you.
Jay Gaddison?
Hello again. County Council President Miller, Finance Committee Chair Turner. I heard you make a comment, you made a comment, you're learning on the fly, you're doing fabulous. And the members of County Council, my name is Jay Gaddison, and I am speaking on behalf of Northern Ohioans for Budget Legislation Equality. I am here before you to urge you to increase, or at least at the very least, sustained funding levels for critical need, critical needs programs that support kinship care in the county budget. Kinship care is an alternative to foster care where children who are removed from the home are placed with family members instead of strangers. Studies show that children who are removed from their home and placed in familial settings provides a greater opportunity for continued family connection, stability, and reunification. Children in kinship care settings have a greater chance at improved behavioral and mental health because the trauma of being removed is minimized. Kinship care is substantially less expensive than foster care and helps to address the shortage of foster care providers within Cuyahoga County. Fortunately, this administration has proposed no cuts to kinship care programs, so I am here to advocate that funding support be given to kinship caregivers who are often low-income and are providing care to children requiring special needs who require essential supportive services in order to provide care to loved ones. The essential services that need your support include mental health, housing, childcare assistance from neighborhood collaboratives, and one-time funding support for emergency expenses. For the welfare of Cuyahoga County's children, the fiscal health of the county, and the success of the county's kinship care program, I urge you to make kinship care a priority by restoring critical needs funding necessary to operate this program successfully. Thank you. And I will take questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gaddison?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cheryl Pritchard?
I'm not Cheryl Pritchard, but she had to leave to take her grandbabies to the doctor. So, um, good afternoon, Council President Miller and Finance Chair Turner and members of Cuyahoga County Council. My name is Gail Long, and I'm a member of Northern Ohioans for Budget Legislation Equality, otherwise known as Noble. I am here to urge you to increase funding for administrative services for the county's Job and Family Services Department. Increased support to this, to this agency will assist the state, as well as the county, in decreasing its overall Medicaid and SNAP error rate and reducing the risk of penalties and increased financial burden to the state. And also, I mean, if you look at it for, for our purposes, it means that there's less damage done to people who are entitled to Medicaid and SNAP benefits. The agency will have the ability to adequately staff its offices and provide the training and oversight needed to operate efficiently. Case loads will be more manageable, reducing backlogs and delays in application and re-verification processing. Timely processing will reduce lapses in coverage to recipients who depend on Medicaid and SNAP for good health and sustenance. The chances of improper benefit dis, disbursements will be reduced that contribute to the state's error rate as well. And when they're, when the error rates are up, usually they say beyond 9%, the state receives cuts from the federal government, and then it gets passed on to us, obviously. We at Noble understand the impossible expectations that the federal government has placed on the state to minimize Medicaid and SNAP error rates in fear of penalties and increased financial burdens. We are asking that this council not make funding cuts to vital administrative services that will adversely impact the agency's ability to efficiently operate, serve our constituents and their constituents, and minimize the likelihood of error due to, due to bureaucracy. And then I wanted to add one thing, but I don't know if I'm going to say it accurately, but there's precedent to the task force that Mr. Bresler referred to. It was done in 2016, and it had to do with public transportation funding. Did I get that right? Okay. But if you have more questions about that, Will Tarter is the expert. So anyway, um, I'm open to any questions you might have. This was referred to by Director Gowen and, um, uh, Mayor Men at previous budget hearings.
Okay, is there any questions for Ms. Long, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that concludes the public testimony.
Okay. So we will move to the part on the agenda where we will address the, uh, is it the, the appeal process for the budget? Is that right, Andrea?
I'm sorry, yes. And then after that, number two.
Are there any departments here that wish to appeal the budget process? I don't hear the Jeopardy music. Okay. Seeing none, we will now go to the discussion of the budget amendment concepts. We will have time now for my, for my colleagues to express their thoughts on any budget amendments you were thinking of. If you're not comfortable bringing it forward right now, I'd ask that you let Council President Miller, and I know by Friday, so we can fully discuss them at the November 17th Committee of the Whole Meeting. The floor is now open.
Madam Chair? It has not been my intention to start, but since nobody else stepped up immediately, I, I think I should. And, and, and I'm just going to say that my, uh, my thinking about the general fund budget is that it's, it's very close to what the administration proposed. It's, uh, it's a very tight budget, and, uh, there's, there's not much room for error. And, and the fact that we had to provide a technical amendment to add, uh, a couple million dollars per year for the election board, further remove, move the flexibility. So, uh, so I'm pretty close to the executive's budget on the, on the general fund. On the Health and Human Services Levy, uh, we are late in, in, in the levy cycle, and, uh, we tend to have more money at the beginning of the levy cycle and, uh, and, and less money near the end. And, and we're getting closer to the, to the time where we would go back to the voters. And, and so I think, given that, we can, uh, we can go into reserves a little bit and, uh, and try to respond to some of the, uh, the highest needs that are out there. We, uh, we heard a lot of things, and, and, uh, we could spend a lot of money, and, and, but we don't have it. But, uh, I would just say that I'm open to, uh, to making some adjustments in a couple of the most critical areas for Health and Human Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, my Council President, my colleagues. First, I want to just commend the Chairwoman for running a great show during this budget opportunity. And to my President, uh, we're concluding our budget review process. Can you tell me what you anticipate in the deliberation amongst ourselves to continue, uh, making final decisions as a group?
So, uh, I would, uh, recommend that if anyone has suggestions, that, uh, you could certainly put them, put them forward now. That's what this part of the meeting is for. And, uh, if, if you prefer not to do it here, or if you, uh, come up with other things over the next day or so, I would, uh, suggest that, uh, that you, uh, let Meredith and me and Trevor know, uh, by Friday morning, if possible. And, and, uh, so, uh, uh, the, uh, the leadership is going to meet on Friday, and we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, take all the suggestions that we, we've heard, and we're gonna, we're gonna try to hash out some recommendations, and, uh, and we'll, we'll bring them to the meeting on Monday, and then we'll, uh, we'll have further discussions. and then we'll have further discussion. And I would just note that we could amend it and pass out the budget to the full council on Monday, but we do have another session a week from Monday listed for, if needed. So if we need to have further discussion, we could say we need to take more time, and we could take another week before passing it out. So it could be done either way, depending on how far we get, how quickly.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just one more to my Council President. Thank you for the course that is going to be taken during this budget review. You didn't mention the reconciliation component after we come up with just the history of budgets that I've been part of. The council comes up with the recommendation from the body, talks to the administration, they hash it out, and it comes out as an agreed-upon budget, and then we vote on it. Is that how it's going to happen here?
So I would expect that that next Monday, there would be two amendments. The first amendment would be a set of technical amendments submitted by the administration to correct technical problems that they became aware of during the process. And they've already been circulating draft versions. It'll probably change a little bit between now and Monday. But you've seen basically what it is with the election board being the biggest item. And the second item is that that the council leadership will present a set of proposed amendments as a package for consideration. And then, after that point, you know, we we ask colleagues to support that process. Everybody has a right to submit individual amendments. But if you do, everything you submit is going to be good, and it's going to be very hard for anybody to vote against it. And so we're going to spend more money than we have. And so I would encourage that if possible, that people try to support the process. After we're done with the technical amendment and the combined substantive amendment, and after we've voted on any individual amendments, if there are any, then the question would be to refer the budget document as amended to the full council for second reading. And it would go to the council meeting on the 25th for second reading and for final passage on December 9th.
And thank you. I was in no way, shape, or form recommending that we do individuals. I'm glad you brought it up, but that was not my intent. My question was the interaction when we completed our budget, talking to the administration and seeing if it could be hammered out, or if there's any opportunity to do that. And I didn't hear you say you were going to do that, but that's fine.
We intend to consult with the administration.
Thank you, that was my question, and you answered it.
Any further offerings, comments, concerns? All right, so otherwise, we'll hear from you by Friday? My understanding, that'll be the last time to have your voice heard, Ms. Simon?
Madam Chair, we're hearing from the sheriff on the 17th, which is after this Friday deadline. So I hope there's, I'm going to consider latitude after going through that process as well, because that's a big chunk of our budget.
Mr. Miller?
Absolutely. With the meeting with the sheriff scheduled as part of our process on the 17th, we're going to have to consider during the meeting on Monday how to deal with whatever we hear from the sheriff. And again, we have two options to say we're ready and know what we want to do, and to pass it out on Monday, the 17th. Or we have the opportunity to defer. We also could pass some amendments on the 17th, but hold a couple of issues out for further discussion over the ensuing week and then come back on the 24th and do the final cleanup and then pass it out of committee. So we actually have three different ways that we could handle this, depending on how it goes.
Would that work for you, Ms. Simon?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I think that is nothing further at this time. If that is the case, I will turn the gavel back over to the Council President.
All meetings of Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the Ohio Open Meetings laws. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matters in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, the council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action. During this time, our live stream will be down, and we ask all those not specifically needed for the executive session to remain in council chambers. Council members will convene in the adjacent Committee Room A and will re-enter the meeting once the executive session has ended. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action? It's been moved and seconded, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry? Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Schlepper?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell? Mr. Jones is absent. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Simon? Mr. Kelly is absent. Council President Miller?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. The motion is carried. We will adjourn for the executive session, but we will allow a five-minute break, and then we'll start the executive session.
The executive session has ended. We're back in the committee of the hall. For the record, Councilman Kelly is now with us. And is there any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, the committee hall is adjourned,